We are Best Buy Auto Supply, come on up.
Located at 771 Ridge Road, applicant Alan Mallett.
Mallett.
Zoning district is MC Medium Intensity Commercial District. The request is a use variance to allow service garage to an existing auto sales business. And the proposal is the construction of an approximately 2,856 square foot detached service garage. Relevant sections of the code, Section 350-18, which is Medium Intensity Commercial District, and 350-101 D2A Use Variance.
So my name is Alan Mallett, here with Best Buy Auto Sales, 771 Ridge Road in Webster. Looking for a use variance, like you said, to obstruct the service department behind our current sales building, to be approximately 34 foot by 84 feet in dimensions. You know, we feel that it's, you know, it'd be a significant thing for our business to get the opportunity to grow and reduce costs of what we're currently paying to outsource our current service situation to multiple other businesses within the Webster area and also bordering towns. My opinion is this is pretty self-explanatory what I'm asking for. Definitely would help us expand and continue to grow in this area. Do you have to answer any questions that anybody has?
The service that you're looking to do, you sell pre-owned vehicles. Do you do the service, are you looking for service because you do service on the vehicles beforehand, or do people come to you for repairs post-purchase?
We're looking to service our own vehicles that we sell prior to getting them ready for our customers.
Okay.
That's the biggest portion of it. We do also sell extended warranties, so that would also allow us to service our customers after the sale as far as mechanical issues or concerns that they may have after the sale as well. Other questions from the board? How tall are you proposing the structure to be? I'm sorry, say that again.
How tall are you proposing the structure to be?
My understanding, the height of the wall, it'd have to be 14 foot high in order to accommodate the lift that would need to be put inside.
Okay. If anybody in the audience wants to speak for or against this project, come on up. Back to the board, any other questions from the board?
Is it gonna be a metal building?
Yes, we're looking to do pole barn style with metal outside.
And all five doors and the same thing?
It said five, right?
Correct, five, yep. Let's see, that would be on the west side, I'm assuming? The parking lot side?
Yes, the parking lot side, yes.
Can you put on the record some proof regarding how you calculate the out-of-pocket cost of labor to external vendors as opposed to how that would compare to your own mechanics? You've got to pay, I'm assuming, some type of hourly rate, some benefits, and what its savings would look like for you? I mean, take a look at, for example, in the year 2024, what you spent out-of-pocket to an outside vendor, even if it's multiple mechanics, and compare it to what your cost savings would be if you could do it in-house?
I mean, I haven't, we haven't really figured out exactly the penny, I mean, it's just...
Well, it's not really the penny, but the statute requires for that area variance, right?
Right.
That you gotta show some financial hardship and a vacuum, just...
It's, I mean, I did include in the thing that, you know, in the last 70 days of 2025, from February 24th to through May 5th of 2025, in them 70 days timeframe, we've paid out in just labor costs in the area of $60,000.
Right.
So, I mean, to hire, you know, mechanics per hour and such would definitely be a significant savings to the business.
What I'm simply saying is, is if this were to be challenged, right? The board has the burden, actually you have the burden, but we have to show that the record would reflect the financial hardship. And let me just finish. And it's more of a conclusion, if you show the gross number and say, "I could do it cheaper," you may be 100% right, but can you establish what that would be?
Yeah, well, I mean, with the economy growing the way it is and the cost of everything going up, I mean, some of the garages we've already are currently doing business with are asking for, you know, to increase our labor rates alone. And it's, you know, it's, to continue to do business, it's gonna be difficult to, you know, find labor rates that are affordable, that willing to work, willing, another businesses willing to work within, you know, affordable guidelines and labor rates that incur in part of not only servicing the car before the sale, but, you know, standing behind all of our vehicles we sell after the sale, it's, you know, there's a lot of...
Let me, um...
I guess I'm not...
No, yeah, let me ask it this way. What are the labor rates that you are being charged from the outside vendors?
Currently, right now, I'm being charged anywhere from $70 to $75 a labor hour.
Okay, and what do you believe that you would be able to hire a mechanic for?
We'd be able to hire a good mechanic for 25 to 30 an hour.
Okay, so there's a difference of about $50 an hour.
Correct.
Right? I think that this is more along the lines where you're...
Right, well, you gotta add in, you know, some benefits, you gotta build the building, you gotta pay the taxes, you gotta pay the utilities, you gotta pay the supplies, you gotta buy the tools. And again, there may be a net savings there, but if it's, hardship is required, you gotta put something in the record.
Right, and what is the, what's the return on investment, or what is the, how long, how long would it take to pay it off, including salaries, tools that you have to purchase, unless the mechanics are coming with their own tools?
Mechanics generally do come with their own tools, you know, it's...
So then, purchasing the building, hiring the employees, how long would it take to pay it off, based on what you're currently paying and then obviously increased rates?
What we're currently paying, again, I would have to guess maybe it'd probably take a good eight years, maybe, 10 years? I mean, it's, it all depends, I mean, the businesses, the business of car sales is, I always refer to it as a roller coaster, you know what I mean? It's always, it's up and down. If business slows down, it's...
Takes longer.
It takes longer. If business increases, which we're hoping, being able to do something like this would hopefully allow us to increase our sales, it shouldn't take as long.
John, let me ask you this, what documentation would we need to be able to, to your point, I mean, if we are ever challenged, we need to be able to produce, ultimately you need to be able to produce, but to be able to, what have you seen in the past that would be beneficial?
Well, this is unusual, because usually we're talking about, historically, the sale of property, the lack of buyers, the inability to release spaces, and the numbers are more objective and led themselves to a calculation.
Right.
This is, this is unique, and so, it's Mr. Mallett, right?
Yes, sir.
Right, so we'll... Over the next 12 months, if we get six more use variance applications, we try to stay away from, you did it for this guy, but you didn't do it for that guy. So the measuring stick really needs to be the same for everybody. So, in terms of what you would need is just, you know, you don't need to pay $10,000 for the analysis, but some analysis that breaks down the difference between this relationship that you have with vendors, which is really either a retail or wholesale cost to you because you're in the business, as compared to having these folks in-house, and what that real cost is. Simple, very simple math is, I can hire someone for $25 an hour, and me and someone else, 75, $5 delta, I mean, that's easy, but let me finish. But that cost is more than $25 to you. And so, if you can, if you can do a projection that puts together what that additional cost is, and I think the board is gonna have a more accurate picture as to the financial hardship that exists. I don't have a vote in this, but whether, you know, the board feels that $10 is not a financial hardship, but $40 an hour is, I think that's what the board will turn on.
Can I ask you a question, actually, based on what he's saying? So you said you spent $60,000 roughly in how many months?
A 70-day timeframe.
A 70-day timeframe.
Yeah, a little over 20.
So, out of that, he, they mentioned, basically, you're looking at an extra 50 bucks if that was you, per transaction, based on outsourced. Do you know what the mortgage payment or the payment is gonna be on the building? I guess what he's looking for is, if you did 50 cars in that time, times, you know, $50 extra an hour, and each car was four hours, there's 200 bucks per car. Out of that 200 bucks, how much is going to the building? How much is going to the insurance? How much is going to that kid? And at the end of the day, is that $200 leave you with 100 or 10 bucks?
At the same time, you know, I look at the hardship could be, at any given time, these businesses could just tell me they're not, no longer they're gonna do business with us either, so now, you know, that would create an even more of a hardship to try to, to try to do business.
Well, that's the other question.
If they did do that.
Is, like, turnaround time, is, if shops get busy, does it impact, say you're taking, you do a lot with Midas, you do a lot with Barth. If they're doing capacity for their regular customers, does that then impact the lead time of you being able to get the vehicles back to service?
Oh yeah, absolutely, it does.
Which...
Currently, right now, I'm about a three to four...
I don't know if you can justify the loss of sale or whatever, but it's certainly an impact.
Currently, right now, we're about a three to four day turnaround from, you know, getting the vehicle into the service garage and getting it gone through and parts ordered and getting it back and ready for our customer. And if, you know, I feel if we had our own shop, that would definitely help speed up the process, because now we're not relying on other businesses to conduct our business.
Right, but there's a cost associated with that, that's gonna decrease the hardship, right, meaning now you gotta have parts on hand. A lot of mechanic shops don't do mufflers.
Those figures are labor-only costs, I pay, we already are currently paying, I'm ordering, I'm currently ordering our own parts and having them shipped to these separate garages.
So, all of these bills that you've provided in your hardship statement, that's all labor?
That's labor only.
Are you able to take those numbers and convert, okay, this is labor one, I go to Midas, and I go to Barth, and I go to whoever else, versus labor if it was my own, including, you know, I'm paying 20, $30 an hour, plus figuring out all that every time you get benefits, it's $60 an hour, but you have more control as well over the number of hours, not just the hourly rate. Is there a way?
Absolutely.
That you could take this and make that a table of outsourced spending versus in-sourced spending?
I mean, yeah, you could simplify it even as little as, you know, one job per se. Say, labor cost to remove a transmission out of a vehicle calls for 10 hours, okay? I'm paying that current shop, you know, 10 labor hours at, you know, we'll say $75 an hour, to where if we have in our own in-house mechanics or own garage, that 10 hours, our mechanics might be able to get it done in eight. So therefore, we're only having to pay our in-house mechanics their hourly rates for the eight hours compared to, you know, the 10 hours that we're gonna get charged from outsourcing all of our service currently. So, to give a breakdown, I mean...
Sure, absolutely.
I could, I could sit down and break down a lot of different voices that incur this total amount that we're outpaying in labor costs.
Even if you can... Like, I hate to have you go receipt by receipt by receipt, but, you know, this much to this particular vendor, you know, totals by month, or by your five-month window, or whatever the numbers that you gave me, of that $60,000, what would that cost be if it was within your shop as opposed to having to source it out? Because parts are gonna be the same cost no matter what, you're providing the parts to them.
The parts costs are gonna, are gonna, are gonna stay the same.
Alan, if you could do, I mean, because we can continue going around, I guess what I, what I'm gonna propose is that, for me, and, I mean, I'll ask the board as well, we have to do our due diligence for the town, and we need to have, quote, proper documentation to be able to say we did our due diligence for the town. If you could provide kind of a breakdown of, you know, what you would anticipate hiring an employee at, what the cost of benefits would be for that said employee, and then what the labor cost, and you've already provided what the labor cost is, but it's not at face value, right? I mean, you spent $60,000, and if I do the math backwards, there's a $40,000 labor difference between what you spent versus what you would spend if you had had that in-house. For us to have, have the proper documentation would make our lives a lot easier, not that I wanted to lay this, I'd much rather go through it, but having that, we have, again, we have to have the due diligence, we have to have it in the file, we have to be able to, wherever audited, we can, we have to be able to say that we've reviewed the documentation, we understand what it is, and the board agreed that it is a hardship, and here's the documentation to be able to do that. You understand what I'm asking for?
I mean, I'm not clearly asking, not clearly sure what is you're asking for, but I mean, like I said, having to rely on other businesses that could shut you down at any given time would, it would, it would put us in a more extreme of a hardship than what we're currently in. Currently, we don't have that as a...
Right, but the requirement is a financial inability, financial inability to achieve a reasonable return. I don't even think you've established what a reasonable return is. So, if you look at the statute and the language, and then from there you put your presentation together and be able to persuade the board, "Hey, look, I can't get a reasonable return because these are, these costs are, let's assume a reasonable return on the sale of the used car is 15%. And let's say because of these mechanical costs, you're only getting 4%. But if you had your own shop, you'd get 15%." That's the kind of analysis the board would need to decide whether you're really under a financial hardship, or it's just not a good location for that operation. It doesn't mean they're not gonna prove it, they may, they're very well proven, but you gotta give them the proof.
Josh, can I ask a question?
Sure.
And the slide on the screen is exactly where I was going with this. The building two doors to the east is an auto sales operation that has a built-in service department. The business two doors to the west is an auto sales and service department all within the same confines, all in the same MC-zoned area. Across the street is outside storage, which allows auto service, but why are those allowed to have it, but not every business along the way?
It's a combination of, they were either pre-existing non-conforming before the current MC regulations came into effect, or they pursued use variances. So...
So they went, potentially they went and achieved the variances that we're asking for, and they provide the information necessary.
Hyundai was Pitts Pontiac, and that was here before, so for most of us before.
Existing, right, pre-existing non-conforming.
The Nissan dealership, I don't remember, like, it's just, it's been, they needed an area variance to expand their service department, I don't remember them giving a use variance, but I don't...
They're part of the Vision group, so they have a Vision building right across the street from Garber, where I can service Henderson's old building, which is now West Air, right, it's on that side. So I know a little bit, it's definitely...
And that side of the road is allowed, but on the south side of the road, we can't do it, just based on how the zoning is.
Right, the Ford, I think, the Vision, the Chevy, and the Subaru, because Garber has the two.
Right, because they've got the two.
And then the Ford, they all have service departments.
Yeah, but they're allowed, the Chevy and the Ford are allowed because of being on the north side, right?
The Vision ones have it too, the old Pontiac building, that has a service department.
HC, right.
So, could, and maybe this is...
And I think Thomas Landscaping brings one of them up, correct?
Right, Thomas is in between.
It's in between Vision and Simon and Us. I just have one question for you. When you transport cars to wherever you're getting them taken care of for service, do you guys drive them yourself, or do you, like, truck them over?
Oh no, we have to drive them, we have to gas them and drive them.
The only reason I ask that is that could, that could also...
So it's...
...hazardous crashes possibly, because...
Take two employees to do that as well.
Yes, you gotta take a personal car to go pick up the other one.
Yeah, well, or dealer car, on a dealer plate, yeah. It takes two people to transport.
That's, I was curious.
One of the locations we are, we had, the only way we could find a reasonable rate was we had to go all the way to Ontario, Wayne County, so it's a, you know, it's a 15-minute drive there, 15-minute drive back for two guys.
It sounds like you can provide the information, again...
I definitely could provide, I'm not, there's not a doubt about that, I just, I don't, this is my first time in being involved in something like this, so it's like, you know, I'll just not fully prepare, but...
Yeah, there's no, there's no shame anywhere, right?
There's lots of hidden costs that can come into, that come into factor with a lot of this, absolutely.
We need that presented to us in a documented form so that we can put it into our file, so that if, if and when we are audited, we have the documentation, just like, right, I mean, you do your taxes, you keep all your, all your receipts and everything else, this way if the IRS ever audits you, you're able to produce, so that's what we're asking for.
But as far, but as far, I mean, but the, but a lot of the factors, if I'm correct and wrong, you're asking what it would save for us, is, that were unknown numbers, I don't, I don't really fully...
You have to make a assumption.
You could project it, but...
Yeah, you're projecting it.
If you gave us a loan, if it cost you 25 bucks to hire, or if we pay someone, but it cost you 75 somewhere else, there's a savings, even when you include benefits, let's say it's double, so it's 50 versus 75, you just say...
We just take 25 hours of labor out.
Right. Per hour, per employee, plus you can add the time to shuttle these to different places as well, and say, on a given, on a given month, I, it takes six hours of my employee time to get the cars back and forth. This way, when we have that information, it's easier for us to make a decision, and hopefully you'll present it so we agree with you, so we can grant you your variance. Right now, it would be difficult for us to do, because we don't have anything to prove that, other than your word, which is good, but we need something that you can present to us that's on paper, so unfortunately, we just need to have the proof, so to move forward with that.
I did provide the paid document receipts of what we...
Right, we've, we've got what your cost is, but what's your cost avoidance if you were able to do that inside?
Just add your employee in there, 35 bucks an hour, you pay the guy, if that was your company and not Barth, what would you have made on every, I would go back to each transaction and pretend like that was your employee working on that vehicle.
What would that cost?
And how much money would you have made on that transaction if you were paying your employee? So, just, you know, out of this, I don't know, April 7th, Midas Auto, 1,818.99. I don't know what was done, I would go back and look at what was done, how long it took, and if you were paying me $35 an hour plus benefits to do that job, you might have only had to pay me 400 bucks, well, you now have 1,400 dollars for your company, times how many transactions, now you can come to us and say, "Okay, if I was paying Adam, $35 an hour plus benefits, and Adam did every single one of these jobs from February to May, Adam would have made X amount of dollars based on $35 an hour in benefits, and my company would have made..." Boom.
Or I would have spent less, I would have lost less.
Right.
Well, spending, he's buying all of the materials, so it's really his waiver, so he's gonna make money on every single one of these.
How do you want him to present it, in a spreadsheet?
Yeah, they take a spreadsheet, it'll be easier.
I think a spreadsheet of, you know, outsourced, outsourced cost, and then what your estimated cost would be if you were able to have done that in-house, and then we can look at that delta, and it gives us, the numbers make sense, I understand what you're telling us, but if, if we say yes to you, we say no to someone else, and someone turns around and sues us, we need to justify that, but this is why we said yes, because here's the data that shows the excess cost that you had to incur because you did not have the ability to do the service. So if you can show us, this is what you paid out, but this is what it would have been internally, plus you're saving the labor of the two guys driving back and forth to pick up and drop off cars.
And so...
Does that make sense, just in a spreadsheet?
Alan, if I was, I'm just gonna use May 5th, 674-49, I'd have a column with cost for outsource, 674-49, plus whatever the cost of your two employees to drive it there and back, plus the cost of whatever the gas is for you taking it to and from, right? So maybe you add another $20, $30 to that, maybe it's more, and then on the other column right next to it, what your cost would be if you were to do it in-house. Obviously, you lose the employees that are driving it, you lose the gas that isn't necessary, you have the hours that are necessary for the mechanic itself, and you give us an assumed rate, right? And that's the, that's what, that's the best you're gonna be able to do, we get it, but you give us an assumed rate of X, and you're gonna do the research to tell me, you know, to tell us what you're hiring somebody at, and what the cost of benefits are for that particular employee, to give us a total all-in number of, yeah, maybe it's 35, maybe it's 25, it's 40, I don't know, you need to tell us what that is. The other piece that I would like, and John alluded to this earlier, is what is industry standard for profitability on each car sold when you factor in auto repairs? And what is your average, right? Because this, this really then talks to what the hardship is. As John mentioned, if it's taking you, you know, if industry standard is 10% profitability, and because the cost of auto repairs is continuing to increase, you're now down at 9% or 8%, now that talks to the hardship as to you going outside to get the work. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, you guys, pretty much all in your own words, self-explanatory, exactly how it could benefit us, but I understand.
And we need, like I said, had I, had I known what we are looking for, I could have, I could have definitely provided all that, it's not a problem.
It's not gonna make you feel any better, but it's not the first time we've sent, asked someone for additional information, come back the next meeting, and then they actually, you know, reviewed it and had approval, so this is not, unfortunately for you, it's not an uncommon thing, it's, we just need that additional information to...
I understand, I get what you're going, I get what you're saying.
Thank you.
If most auto sales places have services, it saves us.
Would that be enough time?
Yeah, do you think one month, if we table this till next month?
I could have it back in 24 hours. I'm trying not to prolong this any further, you know what I mean? It's, the process is trying to drag out, we'd anticipate to try to hopefully break down and have, have something done before snow falls.
Sure.
To prolong this another 30 days is...
Can you take a look at it?
Since, when you bring it back? My understanding, this property once was already approved, the previous landlord had been, he had already went through all this, and got a proposed building, had architect drawings done up, and it was already approved for that. The initial word, that's what I got, and then when I brought it back to them, I hoped they made a statement, so no.
If there was a previous use variance, it runs with the property, and there is no record of use variance for this property?
He did not, he did not give you the proper information.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, and that's, and that's fine, like I said, if it's...
Because a use, a use variance will stay with the property indefinitely, so if we don't have it on record, we don't, we don't have it, so... 24 hours, yeah, I mean, so I'm gonna suggest that we table this until next month, bring the documentation, Josh, will you be able to take a look at it and, and give us any, you know?
I took notes of what you're looking for, so yes, once we receive it, we'll confirm that it's the spirit of what you're looking for.
Okay. So to make this clear, the only thing I have to do at this point is getting just this, this...
I'll ask the board, does the board have any other questions specific to the building or to the use variance itself, not the financial hardship portion of this?
I would just do my downtown invitation and say, there's, there could be a second floor.
No, nobody's gonna live there.
I mean, I could, I spent enough time there.
You might have to pass the corner.
But it's it's not gonna happen.
Say, no, the rest of them.
No, no.
All right. All right, just for a little, in the five days.
Yep.
Thank you.
So then we will table this until next month, which July eighth, is that correct, Josh?
I'm sorry.
July eighth, I think.
July first.
July, July first?
July first and Thursday.
Yeah, no, but the eighth.
Eighth, July eighth. Um so we will see you on July eighth, Alan.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I got a second? Call those in favor, aye?